Okay, ladies and gentlemen, it is now six o'clock. We're calling tonight's council meeting in order for Monday, July 8th. Member of the call, please.
McNabb.
President.
Walper.
Here.
Kennedy.
Shields.
Here.
Brandon.
Here.
Simpson.
I have a question. I want to say first, I'll wait till we get to those agenda items. But I do want to communicate to you that we have a longest serving employee with us. He's been here forty-four years as of Sunday. That's Mr. J.J. Cox. And I think we owe him a round of applause. Can I tell the bicycle story, J.J.?
You won't.
J.J. said he used to ride his bike. I said, "It worked." And I said, "Look at you now." He said he was ashamed of it. I said, "Why? Look at you now. You're an older park." That's the reason you're back. J.J. called you. You rode your bicycle well. And we appreciate your service. You're always there for us. And it doesn't matter what sort of weather, you're there. And we've been always been. We appreciate everything you've done for the city.
Thank you.
And I know you've got a few years left yet, so. All right, in reports of the city council. How much can we approve the agenda as written?
Mayor, I would think that maybe we might need to move the conversation about Mr. Harrison first. So the council consider that before we start accepting resignations from the other offices.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
Okay, Mr. McNabb, moves that we move Mr. Harrison first. I object to that firstly because the agenda's been written. And I think it's important that we deal with the other matters at hand. But we do have a motion. I'll entertain a motion. Motion fails. We'll act in charge. All right, in time, at this time, does everyone here like to comment on something that's on tonight's agenda? Saying that we'll move into the agenda. Item number one is consideration discussion acceptance of the city attorney or by city council regarding resignation of the city attorney, Mr. Chance Harrison. And obviously, this is due to the recent Tennessee General Assembly law that was passed and the agreement that Mr. Chance Harrison made. And of course, unbeknownst certainly to me, and I don't think members of the city council knew something like this was going to happen. But Chance, if you have anything you want to add?
I would just like to thank the members of the city council that voted me on to be the city attorney for the last four months. I've appreciated it. I've enjoyed it. I've enjoyed working for the city and the city avenues. And again, I'll be glad to answer that phone call. But be that as it may, due to the recent court decision and due to the agreement I made prior to accepting this position, giving the city council and mayor my resignation.
Okay, I'm going to back up here just a second. So obviously, we need to approve the agenda as written first. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Brandon. Have a second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Shields. Discussion. Throw a call.
McNabb.
No.
Walper.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Shields.
Aye.
Brandon.
Aye.
Simpson.
Aye.
I have a few comments I want to say at first. I'll wait till we get to those agenda items.
But I do want to communicate to you that we have a longest-serving employee with us. He's been here forty-four years as of Sunday. That's Mr. J.J. Cox. And I think we owe him a round of applause. Can I tell the bicycle story, J.J.?
You won't.
J.J. said he used to ride his bike. I said, "It worked." And I said, "Look at you now." He said he was ashamed of it. I said, "Why? Look at you now. You're an older park." That's the reason you're back. J.J. called you. You rode your bicycle well. And we appreciate your service. You're always there for us. And it doesn't matter what sort of weather, you're there. And we've been always been. We appreciate everything you've done for the city.
Thank you.
And I know you've got a few years left yet, so. All right, in reports of the city council. How much can we approve the agenda as written?
Mayor, I would think that maybe we might need to move the conversation about Mr. Harrison first. So the council consider that before we start accepting resignations from the other offices.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
Okay, Mr. McNabb, moves that we move Mr. Harrison first. I object to that firstly because the agenda's been written. And I think it's important that we deal with the other matters at hand. But we do have a motion. I'll entertain a second. Motion fails. We'll act in charge. All right, in time, at this time, does everyone here like to comment on something that's on tonight's agenda? Saying that we'll move into the agenda. Item number one is consideration discussion acceptance of the city attorney or by city council regarding resignation of the city attorney, Mr. Chance Harrison. And obviously, this is due to the recent Tennessee General Assembly law that was passed and the agreement that Mr. Chance Harrison made. And of course, unbeknownst certainly to me, and I don't think members of the city council knew something like this was going to happen. But Chance, if you have anything you want to add?
I would just like to thank the members of the city council that voted me on to be the city attorney for the last four months. I've appreciated it. I've enjoyed it. I've enjoyed working for the city and the city avenues. And again, I'll be glad to answer that phone call. But be that as it may, due to the recent court decision and due to the agreement I made prior to accepting this position, giving the city council and mayor my resignation.
Okay, I'm going to back up here just a second. So obviously, we need to approve the agenda as written first. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Brandon. Have a second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Shields. Discussion. Throw a call.
McNabb.
No.
Walper.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Shields.
Aye.
Brandon.
Aye.
Simpson.
Aye.
Chance, certainly we appreciate everything that you said about. And I know it's short-lived for you, but certainly appreciate you stepping up in the position. And it's a trying time to try out. So but certainly appreciate everything. And during all this, of course, I've learned that we need to accept his resignation. And so I will entertain a motion that we accept Chance Harrison's resignation as the city attorney.
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Brandon. Second. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, by Ms. Walper and Mr. Simpson, Mr. Wilson.
Got it.
Throw a call.
McNabb.
Should we not get a chance to discuss first, Mayor?
You can. Go ahead.
So what happens if we get to the bottom of the agenda and the city council votes not to reinstate Mr. Harrison?
Mr. Harrison the judge?
No, Mr. Harrison is not the judge.
Mr. Harrison is the judge, Mr. McNabb.
There is no final judgment there.
There is a, the Tennessee General Assembly passed a law that, and I've got it here, but I'm sure you have, that, and was voted unanimously by the Tennessee General Assembly, including Representative Monty Fritz and Representative Lowell Russell of Little City in Loudoun County. And they created the law. You've seen it. And that, and of course, that was a court hearing to that effect. That the chancellor ruled that that law was in effect until further proceedings. And it, you know, it's not up to the city council and certainly not up to me. But from what I know about the case, he was in fact declared the de facto judge. And so, and quite honestly, of course, I was going to say, I'm shocked really and appalled that you would make a statement on your social media page that says that we're ready to put Judge Harrison back in office. We didn't put Judge Harrison back in office. The Tennessee General Assembly did. And you know that. And you misled the general public when you said that.
No, I didn't because it's not a final judgment and it's already under appeal. And even if it weren't, sir.
That's a matter of.
Sir, have I finished speaking?
Go ahead.
It is not a final judgment. And for this court to take action on something that is not a final judgment, that has not gone up in appeal, subjects you all to risk by paying somebody that is not authorized under the Supreme Court.
Well, that has been repeated, though.
The last time I checked, if there's a conflict between the constitution of this state and a statute passed by the General Assembly, the constitution controls. And there will be an appeal. There is already an appeal filed. And when it works its way up, assuming the Supreme Court says that I'm successful, then you will have paid a judge for how many ever months until that appeal is decided. And that is a problem, rather than waiting a month or two or three for that judgment to become final. And you have the notice. You know the judgment's not final. And yet, if you decide to go ahead and pay him and bring him back on the bench, then I will be seeking whatever remedy there can be for personal liability for you knowing that you're going against the law and yet you're doing it anyway.
I'm not going against the law. I'm going against the Tennessee General Assembly passed. And the Tennessee General Assembly clearly states, and again, for the record, not withstanding any provision of the law, constitutional provision or judicial interpretation thereof of a municipal judge that was duly elected or appointed or appointed to the office prior to and marks the seventh, twenty twenty-five, and who is qualified for such office under the law's interpretations in effect at the time of self-election or appointment, shall not be disqualified or removed from office, shall not be disqualified or removed from office due to the residency requirement during the term of the office to which the municipal judge was elected or appointed. And that was Senate Bill 255, House Bill 490, which I knew nothing about until the day before it was voted on. And it passed unanimously by the Tennessee General Assembly this past session.
You're right. It's not. The courts are supposed to decide that and you're supposed to wait until there's a final.
And the court decided last week that he was in fact the de facto judge.
Sir, do you understand what an appeal is and what a final judgment is? Because if not, then the city attorney might be able to explain that.
That's not up to.
It is because you're spending city money. You're spending taxpayer money to put somebody down.
McNabb has your opinion, okay?
Absolutely.
And you do what you've got to do. You're going to, yeah. And make misstatements on your social media page.
There is nothing that's misstated on my social media page. You just don't like the public knowing what's going on.
Mayor, is he ready to put Greg Harrison back in office? I don't mind a bit of the public knowing what's going on.
Well, there you go.
How did I put him back in office? He's already in the office per the chancellor.
He is not. You're not. He's not. But you are going to do whatever you want to do. I'm just here.
I'm going to do what the city council wants me to do. That's what I'm going to do. And the majority rules. All right, we got a motion second. Correct, Mr. Wilson?
It's correct.
Throw a call.
McNabb.
No.
Walper.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Shields.
Aye.
Brandon.
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Chance, thank you for sharing. Item two is consideration discussion of the sentence by city council regarding the resignation of the city judge, Walter Johnson. Ms. Kelsey, you have his resignation in hand, correct?
I do.
Did you share those?
Yes, and I've got Chance Harrison as well.
Okay. Can you please open up, please?
First two, I'm giving you all both chances.
Yeah. Walter, we're here with you. Walter, we certainly appreciate you stepping in and serving. As I said, about Chance, obviously, we didn't know something like this was going to happen. But we appreciate everything that you've done and stepping up for the court system in support. All right, discussion. You entertain a motion to accept Mr. Walter Johnson's resignation as city judge.
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Brandon. Have a second.
Yeah.
Second, Mr. Shields. Discussion. Throw a call.
McNabb.
No.
Walper.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Shields.
Aye. Brandon.
Item three is consideration discussion of city council regarding the performance of Walter Johnson to the office of city attorney. Obviously, Walter is ready to step back up and be the city attorney. And of course, that was the agreement that we made with him. And along with Mr. Grant, Chance Harrison resigned. And I recommend his performance.
Make a motion.
Motion, Mr. Simpson. Have a second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Brandon. Discussion. Throw a call.
McNabb.
No.
Walper.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Shields.
Aye. Aye.
All right, Walter, if you want to come out, Judge Harrison, you want to come out and swear Mr. Johnson in? Thank the bond. It's got the oath.
It will repeat after a minute. I state your name.
I, Walter Johnson.
De solemnly swear.
De solemnly swear.
As city attorney of Little City, Tennessee.
As city attorney of Little City, Tennessee.
To support the Constitution.
To support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Tennessee.
Constitution of the State of Tennessee.
And the Little City Ordinances and Charter.
And the Little City Ordinances and Charter.
Furthermore.
Furthermore.
I will perform with fidelity.
I will perform with fidelity.
And faithfully execute the duties.
And faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office to which I have been appointed.
To the office of which I have been appointed.
In which I'm about to assume.
In which I'm about to assume.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I think, thank you, Judge. I think Walter has a statement he'd like to make.
Hard to believe a lawyer would have something to say. But as my old friend, Dr. Roger Delft used to say, "I'll be brief." That means duck. So listen, you know, I was honored to take the position of city judge because it was a distinct honor and privilege for me to do that. You know, being a judge is, I would say, every lawyer's ambition at some point is to be a member of the judiciary. And I want to thank all members of council and the mayor for having confidence that I would do the job and be able to do the job and let me have that responsibility. And I appreciate that very much. So thank you for letting me be the city judge. Now, having said that, I am glad to be home.
Welcome back, Walter.
You know, when I took over as city judge, it was, I would say that being in that chair over there as the city attorney and prosecutor is a completely different situation than when you're sitting on this bench. And I was surprised, I would say, by what it was and what it really was because nobody knows. But I can tell you right now, it is an awesome responsibility. And during my, I would say, brief sojourn into the judiciary, I would say that I was very, very lucky to have a supportive staff that was beyond anything I could have ever imagined. Now, I know that we had Sabrina Lander and Amanda Smith, our magistrates and our commissioners. And I knew what job they did, I thought. I do not really know what they did. What they do is incredibly difficult. The technical knowledge that they have to have to do that, plus the ability to deal with the public, who are not always the most pleasant, to say the least. Surprisingly enough, people that come to court, sometimes they're not that happy about it. And the way Amanda and Sabrina took care of them, it was awe-inspiring. And the way they helped me and took care of me. Because, you know, I'm a lawyer and it's hard for lawyers to say they don't know anything. Or, of course, I had a young fellow from, I won't say the name of the firm, but they're a local firm, not one of these out-of-town firms, sent a young lawyer down here to tell me that I didn't know what I was doing. Well, he said I was inexperienced then and didn't know the way things worked in municipal court. I think Chance will remember this one. And I asked him if he thought, if that ever worked in any other court to tell the judge he didn't know what he was doing, to convince him to do something. I don't think he really understood what was going on. But really and truly, I did not understand the job. But Amanda and Sabrina, they sure did. And they held me up. They said, you know, here, do this, sign this, sign that. And they were, they were just unbelievably good. They have an incredibly hard job and they do it and make it look easy. That's what I thought when I'm sitting over there. When you get up here, you know it's different. And so I want to thank them so much for the help that they gave to me. And I know I said I'd be brief, but I didn't really tell the truth about that because I want to say one other thing about court. You know, when I sat up here, the very, I don't say it's the first day, but pretty close, a fellow stood right there with a violation of probation. And his attorney told me that we all know that he wouldn't be here if he had had the money. Well, let me tell you something. That set me off. I didn't tell him that. But I said, you know, that's just completely wrong. So after that went on for a few minutes, him telling me why I shouldn't violate that guy, and I told him, I told him, I said, "Well, Mr. Defendant, let me assure you that you have financial obligations that you owe. We didn't make you go break the law. You owe us. You should pay. But it's not about money. Let me assure you, it is definitely not about the money. It's about behavior modification, and we're going to modify yours." And that's exactly what we did. And that's the way we approached our probation. I thought that, you know, it was okay if somebody came in and paid up front to go on unsupervised probation. I don't agree with that anymore. I did not accept that because it is not about money. If you're going to break the law and you're going to go on probation, then you're going to feel the effect of that. And I'm going to see whether or not you can make it. So I had everybody, and I've talked to Judge Harrison about continuing this, and we're going to. Everybody on probation, unsupervised or supervised, had to come back in two months. And I'm going to check them out and see how they're doing. We're not going to wait around for a year to see if they make it or don't make it. So this past Thursday, we had fifteen people due to come back for probation. Eight of them came. And they were doing great. One of them got an unsupervised probation. They'd done exactly what they were supposed to, gone to see the probation officer. They paid all their financial obligations. Well, somebody that does that, I feel comfortable that you let them go on unsupervised probation. The others had steps they had to do and other things to get along with. So they're going to have to come back again. We're going to give them three months now. So they'll be coming back in November. But now those other seven that didn't show up, guess what? We found out early on that they're not going to make it. And so when they come back, they'll have to deal with Judge Harrison, and they'll have to deal with me first, because I'm the prosecutor. And I'm probably not going to go that well for them. So we're changing today, and I changed that. Well, let me tell you. Sabrina and Amanda were so supportive of that and what was going on in court. I cannot thank them enough for that and the way they supported me. And also, I have to tell you, you know, Maggie and Jeff, Jeff was there with me. He was sitting right here the whole time, right along with me, helping me. So the whole crew, we're so lucky to have them in city court. And I want to thank everybody that did that because I owe them a debt of gratitude. And I want to give them a big hand, too. They're not here, but I think you're watching. I don't know. All right, now, I know we had some discussion about this judge business. And I know Ms. McNabb has a different slant on it. I don't know. We weren't, the city was not a party to that lawsuit. The city had nothing to do with the legislature in enacting that statute. Whether it's constitutional or not, we don't get to make that. It's not a decision for city council or the mayor or anybody here. We have to follow the order of the court. And. The order of the court, signed by Chancellor McFarland on July the eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, and which there is now an appeal pending, I understand. But to my knowledge, there's been no stay issued by any court of competent jurisdiction. Now, this court had competent jurisdiction. It was the lawsuit filed by Ms. McNabb in August of twenty twenty-two. The reason that, I guess, Chancellor McFarland had held the election to be null in April, and then some other proceedings were going on. The legislature passed its bill declaring that persons situated such as Judge Harrison were to be the de facto judge. Now, we know he did not meet the residential qualifications, it's easy for you to say, of being the judge. But the legislature in effect held that that remedy would only be prospective and not retroactive. They made the effect of that ruling, and the statute quotes McNabb versus Harrison directly. Chancellor McFarland stated that the constitutionality of the statute was not a subject of that lawsuit. The state attorney general refused to intervene because it was not a subject of that lawsuit. Whether it could have been or not, I don't know. That's something for somebody else to decide. But for us in city government, we have to respond to Chancellor McFarland. And he said it straight out. The defendant in that case, Mr. Harrison, is hereby declared the de facto judge of Little City, Tennessee Municipal Sessions Court, and he shall remain in office he was elected to on August fourth, twenty twenty-two, until the expiration of his term on August thirty-first, twenty thirty. The defendant is hereby deemed a de facto officer whose acts, judgments, and decisions are valid and binding during the completion of the municipal judge's term pursuant to public charter four eighty-seven. Back pay shall be in the discretion of Little City. So what can we do? We can't ignore that. It's an order entered by the chancellor of competent jurisdiction. He doesn't say we have to put Judge Harrison. He says Judge Harrison is the judge. It's not up to the council to make him the judge, in my opinion. I mean, you know, a lot of lawyers, there's all kinds of different opinions. But in my opinion, this order named Gregory Harrison as the judge of municipal court. After reading that order was when I did my resignation as city judge, effective upon acceptance. I didn't see I had any choice because you can't have, I had to resign because Chancellor McFarland made Judge Harrison the judge. It can go up on appeal. And I mean, that was, that went up on appeal once before. And I imagine another year or so, we'll get a response on that. But the city cannot wait for the dependency of an appeal. If that order gets stayed and Judge Harrison is prevented from going back on the bench, then we'll have to deal with that issue then. But as it currently stands, he has been named by Chancellor McDonald. McDonald, gosh, that is old school. Chancellor McDonald was in Knox County many, many years ago when I first started. But Chancellor McFarland has already made that decision for us. We don't have a choice, in my opinion. So I would say that in terms. So I would say that in terms of what we have to do is, I don't think we have to do anything. Judge Harrison has been named already as the judge. That's my legal opinion. Council and mayor can, can do what they want to do with regard to that matter, but that's how I perceive it.
One more thing.
I know, once I got started, let me tell you. We had an executive session here several months ago about a lawsuit with Town Creek Development LLC and the North City. Of course, I was interested in that because it started out just at the end of my term as city attorney previously. And I followed it through. I was interested in it and I paid attention to it. And I went to the hearing last, it was Thursday, last Thursday. And Judge Pemberton has taken the matter under files, but I want to say a few things about that. Let me, let me tell you, we can be so proud of our city employees. Beth Collins, Greg Bogner, and that whole office up there do a fantastic job. And it was clear in that hearing that that was true. Amber was there. It was our city, the way that's run and the way that's all done is highly professional. And that was obvious from the tone and the tenor of the arguments. Judge Pemberton was impressed with the lawyer, the law, lawyering in the case on both sides. And he was correct in that. They, both lawyers did a fantastic job. It's a matter of first impression evidently. But two things I wanted to mention, senior moment, let's me remember both of them. The first one is that they admitted that if our ordinance for the moratorium had contained no exceptions, that they would be out of luck. That is, the plaintiff would have agreed that if that ordinance had no exceptions at all, then they would lose. Which was the first time I've heard them admit to something like that. So we might want to file that away for future reference. The second thing is, is that I don't think they've ever been to our plaintiff commission. Because the plaintiff's attorney, the one laughing at me goes, that was. Our plaintiff commission is not like everybody else evidently. Because Judge Pemberton and the plaintiff's attorney said, well, everybody knows the plaintiff commission rubber stamps everything. I said, oh, my goodness, you invented our plaintiff commission. Is that right, Mr. Simpson?
That's right.
Man, it's rough. You come up here on a plaintiff commission, you better be ready to go because they'll send you home without what you wanted. And it was, I felt sorry for the people coming up during plaintiff commission. So I can promise you, they're off on that. Our plaintiff commission, I have nearly a lot more professional than the others. And I know I've gone, I've gone long, so mayor, we'll wrap it up at this all hour. Thank you so much for letting me come home.
Thank you, Walter, and thank you for the job you've done. And I know you'll, you'll be, you'll be a phone call away in interest, guys on the city attorney side. And certainly, the court system is working a whole lot better than what it used to, and we appreciate it. All right, now, number four, discussion, consideration. City council regarding update. Any questions from City Judge Ray Harrison in my recent court work? Judge, will you come up?
Let me just start off by saying that thank you, Mr. Johnson. Thank you to my son for filling in these last four months. You didn't have to do it, but you did it anyway. You did a great job. And I just appreciate both of you carrying on. Good things for the city of the North City. Next, I'd like just to say that when I was appointed city attorney back in January of 2016, I was honored. I took that job very seriously. I missed that job. But along the way, as being city attorney, I made a lot of friends in this administration. I made friends on the council. I made friends with the staff. And I just enjoyed the position. I really did. I enjoyed the position. I enjoy seeing you all out in the community, speaking with you all from time to time. And it doesn't matter to me if I'm the city attorney, if I'm the city judge, or if I'm, I'm appointed to go get the girls breakfast on Friday mornings. I just enjoy being around these people here. And that's not why I fought so hard for the city judgeship. I really fought hard just to be around the people. And the last four months here, although I've stopped by from time to time, it's not the same as being here pretty much every day. And so whether I'm the judge, like I said, whether I'm the judge, city attorney, getting everybody breakfast, whatever it is, I feel very thankful and I appreciate you all for either putting up with me, being my friend, being a co-member of this community. And I'm just honored to be standing here before you today. So I wanted to say that with regard to this case, and we've all been dealing with this case since I was elected on August 4th, 2022. It's complicated, it's become complicated. And since August 4th, 22, when I was elected and then sworn in September 1st, 22, I began serving as judge. And a lawsuit was filed. This lawsuit, give you a little bit of the procedural history so everybody knows from my perspective. The lawsuit filed by Ms. McNabb sued me personally. And the city made the decision at that time, and I did not have anything to do with this decision, was to hire counsel to represent me. So counsel represented me, and I believe the city incurred fees throughout about a two and a half year process. And I'm sorry that this city incurred those fees. And I'm sorry this city paid those fees. But those fees were earned, and that decision had been made, and I didn't have anything to do with it. So I was elected August 4th, 22. Lawsuit was filed by Ms. McNabb. We were successful, and she alleged that I was disqualified or shouldn't be qualified to serve as city judge because I didn't live within the city. That's a pretty simple argument there. Either he lives in the city or he doesn't live in the city. Everybody knows I don't live in the city. So that lawsuit was filed and argued in front of the trial court of Loudoun Chancery Court, and we were successful at that level. It was appealed, and we were successful with the Tennessee Court of Appeals. After that, an appeal was lodged with the Tennessee Supreme Court. Or permission to hear this case was presented to the Tennessee Supreme Court, and they granted permission to hear the case. And on March 7th, 2025, the Supreme Court, Tennessee Supreme Court ruled that I was disqualified to serve as judge because I did not live within the city and sent it back to the trial court for further proceedings. At that point in time, we as lawyers are taught day one in law school, you follow what a court orders. You follow, that's our rule of law in this whole country. We follow what a court orders. So I didn't feel comfortable taking this bench because I would be in defiance of that court order from our highest court in this state. And so things were decided, people were placed in different positions, and I was just out there. And then Ms. McNabb filed a pleading with the trial court to declare her the winner of the election and for back pay. The winner of the election and for back pay. And I had been serving in this position as judge for two and a half years. You know, and when you get put into fight, and we're all country around here. When you get put into fight, what do you do? You gotta fight. You can't run. You fight. And you definitely fight for what you think's right. Okay? Whether you're right or wrong, if you believe something's right, you gotta fight for it. So when that occurred, when that filing took place, and the plaintiff, Ms. McNabb, asked the trial court to be declared the winner of an election she didn't win, and for you all and the citizens of this city to pay her approximately $200,000 in back pay, I wasn't going to let that happen. I was going to fight. At that particular time, I told the mayor or asked the mayor, if I could proceed, proceed. Meaning, can I represent myself? There's no sense, I'm a lawyer, maybe not the best one, but I'm a lawyer. There's no sense in this city, these citizens, paying for a lawyer to represent me against Ms. McNabb, what I can do. So I began representing myself in the case. I don't know if y'all knew that. And I filed a responsive pleading to that request of plaintiff. And the trial court ruled that she could not be declared the winner, and she couldn't get back pay. So on April 29th of this year, the court ruled, based on my request, that the election be declared void under the law because that was the only option the court had on April 29th. So the court declared the election void. At that time, I had no clue, no clue. I knew vaguely, but I had no clue that there were three judges in Chattanooga, in particularly Red Bank, East Ridge, and Collegeville, who were serving as sessions slash municipal judges who lived outside the cities. They lived in the county just like me. I had no idea that they, who had been following the McNabb versus Harrison case, had gotten their state senator garden hire in Chattanooga to put forth this bill in front of the state legislature in January of this year. Had no clue. And so the Supreme Court came down March 7th of '25 with their decision. The legislature passed the law in April. And then the governor signed it May 21st into law. Had no clue. So at that point in time, the trial court had declared the election void on April 29th. Based on my request, I filed a motion, a pleading, to ask the court to set that aside because of the new law. And the trial court, in its opinion, ruling, final judgment, July 18th of this year, declared the previous order to declare the election void set aside and then issued this final order on July 18th of this year, saying that I was the judge, in effect, during this four month period, that I'm the judge. I won in '22, and I can serve till '30, just like Mr. Johnson said, and applies the Supreme Court ruling prospectively. Now, whether that's constitutional or not, I don't know. Okay? I didn't know they were going to pass the bill. But as it stands right now, pursuant to that statute and pursuant to Judge McFarland, Chancellor McFarland's order, I'm the judge. That sounds kind of braggadocious of me, but in the setting that we're in, I am the judge. I won. I got an eight year term, and I should be allowed to serve my eight year term. If the higher court rules differently, then we'll have to accept that and move on and how we move on. But as it stands right now, I'm the judge. I'm prepared to step forward. I think our first court date is August 7th. I'll be here, and I'll conduct business as well as I'm supposed to. With that in mind, I've also asked for back pay for the four months that I've missed. The basis of that is this. I didn't cause me to miss it. I didn't cause me to miss it. I didn't cause the state legislature to pass this law. But they passed the law that says, despite what the Supreme Court, Tennessee Supreme Court has said, he was always the judge. I've known all along, while I've been sitting on the sidelines for four months, that those judges in Chattanooga ain't missed a day. I know, I've talked to them. I've talked to their lawyers. Not that I called them, they called me. Not that I've got all the answers, they just want to know what's going on up here. But in, in our discussions, I'll ask them, are you still sitting on the bench? Yes. Are you still getting paid? Yes. So I took that into consideration. And then I got to thinking, okay, well, if I was the judge the whole time, and Ms. McNabb asked for back pay for two and a half years of which she did not serve.
Mr. Harrison, I've listened to you say that repeatedly.
Your honor, Ms. McNabb.
There is nothing.
Your honor, Ms. McNabb.
Asked for back pay.
Your honor, Ms. McNabb. Your honor.
That's the correction I'm making.
Go ahead, Mr. Harrison.
I thought, well, I should not be allowed to. I'm not trying to cost the city or the taxpayers any money. I'm not. If I was, I would have gone along with the attorney representing me throughout the process after the Supreme Court decision. So I'm asking this body to consider the four months of back pay that I would have received had I stayed on the bench, just like those judges in Chattanooga. That's all I got.
Hey, let me ask you something. And of course, obviously, there's going to be appeals made. And before, obviously, you was an employee of the city. And I think everybody here knows what we felt about that because you was an employee. And we felt like that, that you should have representation because you, you're, you was employee just like anybody else. Are you prepared to continue pro se in this case if it moves forward?
Absolutely. Ms. McNabb. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Ms. McNabb has filed a motion to stay in the trial court, has not been heard. And she has just perfected a notice of appeal to the Court of Appeals in this state.
Sure.
And I, and I've responded, I didn't respond to the motion to stay because it didn't require a response. But I did respond to the motion or to the notice of appeal with the Tennessee Court of Appeals because you have to, because I'm a party and I'm pro se, I have to give them my address information for the taxing of cost if that's ever necessary. So I have responded to that. Yes, I'll, I'll represent myself pro se, however long this goes. No problem.
All right, discussion.
I would like to respond to this, if you want, if I can. Okay, I will.
I just, I just think it.
She filed a pleading, she must forgot what she put in her plea.
Okay. Well, obviously, that's for another court and not for city council. And you'll have your chance, I'm sure, in front of.
That's fine.
Judge or judge is. And, but I think we need to deal with the problem in hand here. But I'll open it up for discussion as far as is back pay is concerned.
Well, first of all, I don't see anything specifically about a request for back pay on the agenda. So I would question whether that's appropriate. Second of all, there is no final judgment. I pretty much know how you all are going to vote, and that's fine. I will remind you, though, that in 2021, when this came up and the city council was ready to change the, the law for the city to allow Mr. Harrison to run, I stated in an open meeting at that point that that was unconstitutional. You proceeded anyway. The Supreme Court has now ruled that that is unconstitutional. We do not have a final judgment. I don't think it's appropriate, regardless of what the case was about, whether I was a party or not, it's not appropriate for the city council to take action when there's not a final judgment for the lawsuit. That's, and I've never filed a pleading. And if Mr. Harrison can find one, then, then I will certainly correct myself. But I've never filed a pleading asking for back pay and actually objected to his request for back pay because he did not sue the city and the court did not have jurisdiction.
Mr. Sherman.
Mr. Simpson.
I feel like it's so evident that there's a conflict of interest with Mrs. McNabb that, you know, I don't think she, she can vote as she likes. But I would like to make a motion that we move forward, give Mr. Harrison his rollback and allow him to go back with. back with, pull back back.
Okay. Well, let me make it clear, we don't have to do the judgeship part because the court has already done that. So the only thing we're dealing with is the back pay. But let me say this, I don't know about in '21 what she's referring to. I know every judge, and there hadn't been many, and I brought this up once before, Judge Van, when he first ran for the city judge, if I'm not terribly mistaken, he lived in Blackberry Landing, and so the word defined as district, that the Supreme Court ruled on me that you had to be inside the corporate limits, had nothing to, that, I mean, it's never been brought up before. Certainly, Ms. McNabb didn't bring it up to election commission at the time, and she didn't bring it up until she lost the election. So, but the only thing, Mr. Simpson, that we're dealing with is the back pay issue, and as far as it not been on the agenda, it says regarding updates and any requests from city judge Ray Harrison, so I do believe we're in order in him asking for that, so.
My motion was only to give him his rollback and allow him to go back.
Well, giving him the rollback, I understand what you're saying, but I just want to make it clear, giving him the rollback is not our decision, that's already been made.
That's right.
So the only decision that we're dealing with is the back pay.
Yes.
So do you make a motion on that?
That's my motion. Yes, sir.
I have a motion, Mr. Simpson, I say.
Say.
Second, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Brandon, you want to, Mr. Wilson, does you have anything?
I have just one, one matter real quick with Ms. McNabb. I want to apologize to Ms. McNabb. There's nothing in her pleadings that asks for back pay. Good, she's correct. What she's not telling is she asked to be declared the winner, and she's a pretty good lawyer. She knows that she was declared the winner, she'd be entitled to the back pay. Same difference. Thank you.
Okay. Got a motion, say. Discussion. Rook, Allen, Wilson.
McNabb.
I abstain.
Womper.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Shields.
Aye.
Brandon.
Aye.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
All right, out of the five, a consideration, proceeding committee, your recommendation for good, granting permission to go out for bid for a street department truck, proceeding committee met, and JJ asks that we go out for bid, and that will come out of Stormwater, if I understand, is that right, Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Simpson, you have anything on that?
I do not. I'd like to make a motion, we approve JJ for a truck, he's had that one long enough.
All right, Mr. Simpson, make a motion out of, say.
Say.
Second, Mr. Brandon, discussion.
What kind of truck is this for him to drive personally, or is this a work truck for the street department?
Well, we don't, we don't buy personal trucks, so it is a truck for the street department, and he doesn't know what kind because we haven't gone out and bid yet.
So like a dump truck or just?
It'll be a pickup truck.
A 150 or?
It'll be a pickup truck of some sort that he drives over that base, happy truck.
Similar to what he has now, I assume.
Correct. I would imagine you'll check, say, bid first, and hopefully have something there that's suitable for him, and if not, then obviously that would have come back to the city council. Is that right, Ms. Council?
Yes, I was correct.
You have a discussion. Ready to say a motion?
So move.
First, Mr. Simpson, I have a second.
Second.
I may have already done that, I don't know, I'm trying to thought here. Second, again, Rook, Allen, Wilson.
McNabb.
Aye.
Womper.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Shields.
Aye.
Brandon.
Aye.
All right. Out of number six, the city council, consideration regarding building vacancy of the police department of Giovanni Espinoza, he is a part-time employee now. Director White.
Thank you, Mayor. So yeah, we, as I said, the last week, we have an opening, and Officer Espinoza's been with us for two years, two out of three. He was finishing his college degree at that particular time in an internship with TBI. He's done an amazing job for us the last two years, so I would highly recommend that we move him to a more time status, more time status.
You've heard the director's recommendation, entertain motion.
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Brandon, I have a second.
Say.
Second, by Ms. Womper, her police, and Mr. Wilson, Rook, Allen, Wilson.
Got it. McNabb.
Aye.
Womper.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Shields.
Aye.
Brandon.
Aye.
Director White, you'll let us know when his first day will be. I mean, I'm pretty sure it'll be pretty.
Yes, ma'am.
Swift, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Council?
No, sir, I don't. I don't want to take any more of anyone's time.
I don't believe we have any business here, it doesn't look like. Any other business? I motion to pay the bills.
I'd like to make a motion to, that the bills be paid, were properly approved, then the funds are available.
Ms. Womper, make a motion to repay the bills, I have a second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Shields, Rook, Allen, Wilson.
McNabb.
Aye.
Womper.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Shields.
Aye.
Brandon.
Aye.
I have a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn, Mayor.
That's Ms. Kennedy, I have a second.
Say.
Second, Mr. Brandon, Rook, Allen, Wilson.
McNabb.
Aye.
Womper.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Shields.
Aye.
Brandon.
Aye.
Simpson.